Okay. Commissioner Zubor, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Here.
Okon, sorry. Commissioner Graham Hudak? All right, Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here, and Chairman Green?
Here.
And we're just missing Julia Perkins.
All right. We met last on July 10th, and we have minutes that correspond to that meeting. Do we have any motion to accept those minutes?
So moved. Oops.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Dodson. Any further discussion? All are in favors of approving those minutes of July 10th. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have an agenda tonight of three items from staff. Anything late to add?
No, certainly.
From the commission, anything late to add as an agenda item? Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Okon and support by Commissioner Engel to accept the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Our first, our first agenda item tonight, in fact, the first two are public hearings. Public hearings allow the public to speak their piece one way or the other, Okon, or ask questions on the stated project. If you do come up, we ask that you fill out the form and give that to staff for the records and speak into the microphone because we do tape these proceedings and people at home would like to hear what you have to say. So our first item tonight is the Singh Executive Park rezoning, where we are considering rezoning, a rezoning request for the, within the Singh Executive Park. You may know that that's located north of Michigan Avenue and west of Lily Road. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a request from Singh Development to rezone a portion of the Singh Executive Park on the north side of Michigan Avenue, west of Lily Road from C-3 to LIR. This is approximately 8.39 acres. It's bounded by Executive Drive on the north and east and west sides and Michigan Avenue on the south side. Originally, the entire park was owned LIR, Light Industrial Research. They built the first four buildings, retained the LIR on that, and then they had rezoned the rest of it to C-3. Based on the zoning history, you can see there's been quite a bit of zoning changes back and forth on this. It's designated mixed use on the master plan, so it does allow some flexibility. But the, the western portion, they rezoned back to LIR several years ago. And the piece, Unit 2, you can see that little notch there above the word executive, that was rezoned from LIR to C-3 to accommodate the trampoline park in that building because it couldn't be done under LIR zoning. So now they're coming back and asking that the remaining C-3 portion, not including the trampoline building, be rezoned to LIR for light industrial use. They have, you know, plans to build currently where the, a building where the LIR letters sit and, and where the C-3 sits. They feel right now that the market is better for light industrial than it is for C-3 in this particular location. So they would like to go back to their origins and get it back to LIR, consistent with the master plan and the mixed use designation on the north side of Michigan, and we would recommend approval of the change. The only thing that does is leave that little building, little donut hole zone C-3. So, but we've got a use pending on that. If that use ever moves out and they need to use it for light industrial, they could always come back and rezone it back to light industrial. So, you know, as part of a business park, whether it's commercial or light industrial, probably doesn't make that much difference. So, the light industrial is more restrictive in uses than the LI, the LIR is more restrictive than the LI use because it is on the north side of Michigan Avenue. So that's, if it were zoned LI, it would allow some more commercial uses than LIR does, but the LIR is more restrictive in terms of use and development standards, so.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is there a project sponsor to talk about this? Sir, could you come up? Welcome.
I'm Avi Graywall with Singh Development. I think Jeff kind of hit it all the points, but just to go back, you know, we developed a sub many years ago, and we built the first three buildings and they leased, and then, you know, we had economic recession and we were kind of just trying to do what we could to, to keep things afloat and kind of keep things moving. So we had rezoned it to commercial because we had, I think there was like a Meyer or Walmart or Target that was, was interested in it, so we were just trying to get ahead of it, and it never happened. And a few years ago, we took the western part of the property and rezoned it back to LIR. We spec'd a building, 50,000 square feet. Happy to say it got completed, and now we have a tenant in there, 50,000 square foot user, automotive user, and then, and now we're building the, the fifth building in there, 34,000 square feet. We're, we're into the township for approvals on that, going to hopefully start that this fall and spec, try to do the same thing, spec it and find a tenant. And so, we're seeing that there's, there's more interest in light industrial in this market, and so, you know, we're just trying to get out of it. Once we're done with this, this building, we want to move on to the next ones.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Sorry.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go right to the audience and find out if there's anyone with any questions or concerns. Anything at all? Nope?
Chairman Green, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Okon. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was quick and easy. We're going to start with the commission. Commissioner Dodson, did you have anything you wanted to say on this?
No, I'm okay.
Commissioner Okon?
No, just my only concern is having that little pocket of C-3 up on top, but I guess if anything ever happened to airtime, another commercial, a commercial could still go in there.
Yes, it's really an industrial type building, and that's the type of building they needed, which is, is why they needed the C-3 zoning, is because the indoor recreation use that they needed, you know, couldn't go into the LIR district, so. You know, I assume once, if the trampoline park ever goes out, you know, it could be converted back to a warehouse and distribution facility or a light industrial facility like it was designed for, so.
Technically, another commercial C-3 could still go back in there because that's what...
If, if they have enough parking to support it. One of the issues with industrial buildings is they're built with a certain amount of parking. So if it, like, for retail, that wouldn't be supported there because there wouldn't be enough parking there. So, more likely, it would go towards another indoor recreation type use that didn't need as much parking, or it would be converted back to an industrial use, so.
Commissioner Zubor?
I'm good.
Commissioner Engel?
All set.
And Commissioner Graham Hudak?
No, thanks.
Nothing? Okay. I do have just one quick question, Jeff. So, the C-3, it's, we're, we're dealing with an either/or here. We've, we've designated Michigan Avenue, in fact, we're going to be talking about that further in terms of mixed use. Is there any way to keep the availability of the C-3 in an area like this that, because the reason that I get concerned is because over the recent years, we've noticed that there are certain uses that are not really light industrial that can do well in an industrial or a light industrial area with those types of buildings and parking, et cetera, et cetera, whether it be, you know, kennel or dance studios, you know, things that were like this with Skyzone. Is there any way to keep that from being this way or that way and making it more difficult to develop?
Well, I mean, the light industrial district would be more flexible in terms of some of those recreational type uses or business uses. LIR is more restrictive in terms of use, and one reason why it is is because it's on the north side of Michigan Avenue closer to residential. So that was one reason why, is because it was supposed to be lower key, you know, less intrusive, and so when you get into some of those higher intensity commercial uses, then they, then that's more impactive, and it generates, they generate more traffic and those kinds of things. You know, that's one reason why this area of, of Michigan Avenue is designated a mixed use so that we can, it has the flexibility of going either way. On the south side, it would be light industrial or C-3. On the north side, it would be LIR or C-3 or office. This thing is, this has been zoned C-3 since, I don't, since 2006 is when it was rezoned to C-3. So in the past 10 years, they haven't gotten any takers on commercial, and with all the commercial on Michigan Avenue, obviously, this is, this is kind of a tweener location. You know, it's not close enough to the freeway, but it's not close enough to the commercial node that we have at Canton Center Road where most of the, you know, regional commercial traffic is. So, it's kind of one of these, you know, it's the same thing at, you know, Morton Taylor Road, why that hasn't been able to support commercial there either. That area in between Sheldon and Lily is kind of in between places.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if there's any way which we can, you know, maintain the flexibility and not have to have the, the project sponsor or developer have to constantly come back.
Well, it would be LI, but the master plan doesn't support LI on the north side of Michigan Avenue because it, because LI allows some heavier industrial uses to...
Gotcha.
It's a broader category, so.
All right. Well, that was the only concern that I have. I see no, I have no objection to, to making this change.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone the subject area within Singh Executive Park, Wayne County Subdivision Plan Number 568, as shown on the map, from C-3 Regional Commercial District to LI-R, Light Industrial Research District.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, seeing none, would you call the vote, Commissioner Zubor?
Absolutely. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our second public hearing, the second item of the night, is the Brookwood Park detached condominium, condominiums, variance to the condominium ordinance. This property is located north of Cherry Hill Road and east of Lots Road. We're considering a preliminary site plan approval. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a detached condominium, 26-unit, single-family project on 6.66 acres. This property was rezoned earlier this year by the Township Board to R6. There's a little strip north of the, the property also includes a little strip of R2 property to the north of the ITC corridor, but effectively, that's not being used at all. The, the project meets all the design requirements for detached condominiums, except that the condominium ordinance limits dead-end cul-de-sacs to 20 units. The other limitation in the ordinance is that we have a maximum road length of 1,000 feet. Due to the design of this project, proposed road length is only 600 feet. The fire code only requires a second point of access if there are 30 or more units, so it's kind of one of those in-between things. The road isn't long enough, but there's too many units, but it still meets the fire code requirement. So in this particular case, you know, we would recommend granting of the variance, the, the fire marshal doesn't have a problem with the variance to the, the number of units since it doesn't exceed 30. The proposed housing project, product is essentially two-story homes, so there'll be detached condos, so there aren't any lot lines. So we've had several of these projects throughout the township where, you know, there's several different options under, under the development. This is actually zoned R4, single-family. So, you can either go site condo subdivision or detached condo. So those are your three options as a permitted use. So they've opted with the flexibility of using detached condominiums in this particular location. The final design of the overall project, obviously, will be reviewed with a final site plan. There's a couple landscaping things they still need to fix before it goes to the board, but essentially, the plan, I'll bring up the colored plan. You know, you know, to the east, we've got an existing apartment complex, Cinnamon Point, or to the west, to the east, you know, we have an existing soil operation, topsoil operation, you know, to the east of this project. ITC corridor is to the north, so it's a single cul-de-sac. So you can see the, the driveways are, you know, set back off of the road. The pond is the north end of the property. It's a fairly small project. The, the traffic is negligible on, you know, 26 units onto Cherry Hill Road that's negligible. I know that was an issue that came up during, during the rezoning earlier this year. You know, Wayne County will ultimately look at geometrics of the driveway and site distances and so forth for final design, but it's a very narrow piece of property, so there aren't a whole lot of options for improvements in the right-of-way there. They will be providing sidewalks internally and along Cherry Hill Road. And in your packet, I won't go through all of the housing designs, but there's a conceptual at this point, they'll have to add brick and, and meet the general requirements. Landscape plan, they are providing some buffering along the property lines just to buffer themselves from the, the topsoil operation. There's kind of a drain that runs through the property, they're picking up the water from that drain that runs from the topsoil operation all the way over to the existing creek to the east of Cinnamon Point. So they'll pick up that water and collect it and manage that before it gets sent on its way. But other than that, it's an amply landscaped project, should be, provide another opportunity for different types of, of housing product in Canton Township. We don't have a whole lot of detached condos which are two-story. Most of our detached condos are more senior-oriented at one story. So for those people who don't want to take care of a yard, this is your product, you know, because the Condominium Association will be responsible for all the lawn maintenance because there are no lot lines and there'll be, those will be general common elements. So it could go senior, it could go, you know, family, you know, oriented, you know, product. Boji Development has been working on Crystal Village down off of Denton, mostly a senior-type product. They're here to explain their, their project for you tonight, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we get to hear from the project sponsor, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Dodson and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is officially opened. Mr., you said, Mr. Boji? Yes, would you have any more to add to the scenario?
No, I think Jeff covered everything. Unless any questions?
All right, if you, if you don't mind if we have any questions, we're, I'm going to go to the audience. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this project? Come on up, sir. Come on up. Yep.
I own the property that you said the topsoil operation...
Go ahead and speak into the microphone, sir. Yeah.
I own the property next door.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they have to pick up the water that's draining from your property onto their property. They can't block your drainage.
Okay, that, that was my question, that's all.
Yeah, so they have left, you know, you can see in the north where they, they've left that little area there, there's a slough there that they'll be picking up along the property line, and they'll be pulling that water and taking it to their pond and then onto the creek. So there is, it's a natural drainage way, they have to pick up your, the stormwater because that's the way it naturally flows.
That's, that was all a question I had.
Yep, so that'll be, the final design of that, it'll be done during engineering from a stormwater standpoint, so the final design will be presented at final site plan.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Okay, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Support.
We've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to start down on this end. Commissioner Graham Hudak, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yes, why do we have a condominium ordinance limiting cul-de-sacs to 20 units? Why is that a guideline?
Well, there's, there's two provisions. It really depends on the amount of, the zoning and the road length. That's why there's two provisions. We probably need to change it since the fire code a couple of years ago was changed to 30 units. We probably need to change the condominium ordinance to 30 units to be consistent. So the two ordinances are out of sync because the fire code changes with the building code. So when they make changes to the fire and building code, those are automatic. When they're, when those codes are readopted, and we just need to catch up and make amendments to the condominium ordinance. Part of it has to do with the design and, you know, for example, if you were in, if you were not in an R4 district, say you were in an R2 district, then that road would tend to get a lot longer because the lots are wider. But when we're dealing with a detached condominium here, because the, the houses are a little bit closer together, you're, you're not going to get to 1,000 feet, you know, in this particular zoning district because of, you know, the width that we're dealing with of, of the, of the units. We're not dealing with 100-foot wide lots. But, so normally, the fire code may have been 20 units at one time, and that was why 20 units was in the code. I, I have to go back and research that, but we've had a couple of these instances lately in the past year where we've needed variances to the number of units just because the road length was way less than 1,000 feet, but, but, you know, the fire department was okay with it. So we'll have to look at evaluating the ordinance.
Is that why we're having a variance, because ordinances don't match like that? They're out of sync?
Well, one, they're less than 1,000 feet, but they're more than 26 units, so they need a variance because they're over the 20 units. Because there's two provisions in the code, there's, you know, usually, the more restrictive one always applies, so the more restrictive one in this case is the 20 units. But they are substantially less than 1,000 feet, and they're under the 30 units that the fire code limitation is before you need a second point of access, so.
You also said something about the traffic is negligible. How did they, what does that mean?
Well, I think we evaluated the, the traffic when we went through the rezoning and based on the maximum number of units they could get under R4. So I think when, when we evaluated the traffic at that point, there was a negligible impact of peak hours for additional 26 units on this segment of Cherry Hill Road.
Only two lanes there, right?
Right, so the county will determine whether or not a bypass lane is required based on the amount of traffic they're adding to the road. So whether or not a turn lane is needed or whether a bypass lane is needed due to its proximity to the intersection and all of those kinds of things, the county will evaluate, so.
Is there, you'd need a bus stop probably right there or something, and that would be, okay. All right, thank you.
Probably at some point in time, that portion of Cherry Hill does need to be widened to five lines like everything else, but at this point, the county doesn't have it programmed, so.
Commissioner Engel?
All set.
Commissioner Zubor?
I'm good.
Yeah, as am I, basically. The only, I wish, I wish this were a, a larger parcel because I'd love to see the detention pond moved closer to Cherry Hill because those are usually the best landscaped and, and a nice, nice feature.
But where the drain is and how it drains, it needs to be in the back. They don't want to pump it, you know, otherwise you're pumping uphill, so.
But I do like the, now, this is going to come back to us, if we approve this tonight, this will come back to us as a final site plan, correct?
That's correct, when all of the engineering done and the condominium documents are prepared, right. This is just preliminary.
I do like the floor plans and elevations, the fact that the garages are not so far jetted out from the, from the rest of the house. I think that's, that's a nice feature. Good job. Good job. Anybody else have a comment? Commissioner Okon? Commissioner Dodson?
You know, I, I really have an issue with 26 units. I just think there's, we're just squeezing too much into this. I, if, if, if one of these units has a family gathering and they have a couple people coming over, there's, there's, there's no place to even put a car without blocking a driveway. I don't know, I, I think we're squeezing too much in.
Essentially, the separation of the units meets the ordinance requirement, so even if it was 20...
Doesn't meet the units, though.
I know, but, okay, so, so they lofted the last six units off the cul-de-sac and they shortened the cul-de-sac. The houses are still the same space apart.
How close are the houses?
I think there's a 15-foot separation between homes.
Between each.
Yeah, and like, you can't even fit a, it looks like you fit maybe one car in between a driveway.
I think the ordinance is 10 feet. We went to 15.
Yeah, the ordinance is 10 feet separation, and they're at 15, so they're exceeding the separation between units. So even if they lofted off six units, the houses are still be close together.
If they lofted off, if they lofted off six units, they're going to space these a little bit more, they're going to provide a little bit more green space, which is a selling point for, for those units.
No, they're going to shorten up the cul-de-sac and pull the pond in because they want, they won't want to build a road that long.
That's your thought. I'm thinking, as a marketing guy, trying to sell it, maybe more space is what they want. I don't know, I just think we, we're just squeezing too much in.
We're dealing with parking on, only on one side, right?
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a valid point, because trying to picture what I know has kind of been the routine with people leaving their cars out in Canton.
How wide is the footprint, Joe?
Oh? 41 feet.
Okay, so essentially, these are equating to a 55-foot wide lot, which is like a Cherry Hill Village lot.
Cherry Hill Village lot, you have a lot more area to park.
Oh, you have one, parking on one side of the street.
Down the street, you can go to another, another block. This, it's confined. There's no place to go. It, it doesn't connect to any other roads, it's just its own little pocket. That's just my thought.
Anyone else want to comment on that? Yes, go ahead.
I actually agree with that also. Even if we pull it in, it does give more green space.
Area at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is wide open here, and just earmarked it for parking.
Say that again?
They could put visitor parking at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Oh, I see, I see, so you create a...
The problem is, people are going to park where they're going to park. I mean, you could put four parking spaces there, whatever, but if you're having a party in Unit 23, they're going to park as close to Unit 23 as they can. I mean, people just do, right?
I mean, we have, I mean, we have, we have short cul-de-sacs all over with 20, 30 lots on them, so it's no different than any other cul-de-sac with 20 or 30 lots on it. There's always going to be a limitation to parking in any dead-end cul-de-sac. So, whether it's 20 units, whether it's 22 units, whether it's 30 units, so. I mean, he's not going to build a road longer than he needs to service the, the houses, so...
Our ordinance right now says he's allowed 20. And that's what it says.
It also says the road doesn't, can't exceed 1,000 feet, so...
Doesn't.
Right. So he's only at 600 feet, so it's almost half the road length, then he's allowed to go, and then the fire code allows up to 30.
More houses.
Fire code allows up to 30 before you have a second point of access. So we can sit and change our ordinance in two months, and he can be back for you in two months with 26 units without a variance, so...
I, I don't know if I would vote for that change in the ordinance.
You're saying whether he has 20 or 26, he's still going to have 50-foot lots, 15 feet between houses?
Yeah, they're going to have, I mean, he's basically separated these things more than he's required to separate them. Right now, the ordinance for detached condos has a separation of 10 feet in the R4 district. So he's, he's separated these by 15 feet, so essentially, depending on how you measure, you know, he's essentially got 55 to 60-foot wide lots. So you've got, you know, 40 feet between driveways, so...
Is enough room for two cars?
Plus two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway.
Right.
So six cars per house.
Well... Because you can only park on one side of the street, but yeah. Close. Five. Five.
Cars in a little area.
But don't you think we see that all the time with graduations and this time of the year? I mean, and I think everybody's accepts the situation for, for graduation party or whatever it is.
Boy, you're not on my neighborhood association.
Comfortable with this, this number of houses?
The ordinance says 20. So he went a shorter road with more units.
Is this the maximum road you could put in there, basically?
Based on the parcel size, yeah, and where the pond is, yeah, you're not, you can't extend the road back any further.
Right, so this is the maximum size of the road? But if you went to 20 units, he would just make the road shorter?
Why build a road longer than you needed to build it to serve the units?
You're not going to change the width.
That's additional, yeah, that's additional asphalt you wouldn't need to put in. So why would, you know, why would you do that? So.
Selling point?
Can't guarantee that that would be, does that really improve the situation, though? That's the, the question.
If he kept the road the same length as he shows it right now and he has six less houses and he spaces it evenly, absolutely.
But he doesn't have to keep it the same length.
No, he doesn't have to.
Right. And so.
But if he came back and he showed me a plan with a shorter road with 20 spots, 20 houses, I would understand because he meets the ordinance. Right now, he doesn't meet the ordinance.
So you'd like to see this come back for the redesign?
From what I'm seeing right now, he's shown some, something to us that doesn't meet the ordinance. Unless I'm looking at it wrong.
Oh, he, that's correct. But what you're saying is you're not supporting a, a variance.
Correct.
That's what the issue before us is.
You need, need two motions, one on the variance and one on the preliminary site plan. So.
Be the same, wouldn't it?
Well, you can't go on to the second motion until the first motion passes.
The first one passed.
Well, can I-
In order to go to the preliminary site plan, you have to approve the variance to so many units. If that doesn't pass, then the second one doesn't really need to be voted on.
And you could pass a preliminary site plan subject to removal of six units, I guess.
Right. That's, that's true.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, before you get going, so is it?
You can make a motion and then second for discussion and then.
Sure. That's good.
All right, go ahead then.
I move to recommend approval of the request to approve the preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park Condominiums and the variance to the condominium ordinance to allow 26 units on a dead-end cul-de-sac on tax parcel as noted, tax parcel numbers as noted in the motion.
Support.
All right. I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Further discussion? The-
I have a question.
Yes.
Why are we giving, granting a variance for this, Jeff, and not the zoning board?
This is not the zoning ordinance. There's variance procedure, variance procedures in the condominium ordinance and in the subdivision ordinance. They don't have to meet the same criteria for hardship or unique circumstance that a zoning variance does. Because in a zoning variance, you're, you know, this is, this is essentially a design requirement in the condominium ordinance. It's not a zoning ordinance requirement. So we've issued these from time to time on projects due to, you know, the type of project it was. So this isn't all of that unusual. So.
Further? Yes, go ahead.
Just one more thing too also. It's more, more traffic going in and out of one access point too, which is a concern to me also. But.
Okay. All right. Well noted.
But the fire code's 30 units for one access point. So we also need to consider the fire and building code, which is the code that deals with public safety. You know, and that's why I recommended he apply for the variance because we had that, that disconnect between the fire and building code and, and the condominium ordinance. So he's right in between there. You know, he's right in between the 20 and the 30. So it's just, it's, it's one of those things. It's, I don't know that you can base a denial of a variance just based on your perception of whether or not there's enough parking because he meets all of the standards for the building separation, parking's allowed on one side of the street.
You don't deal with parking in the condo ordinance, right?
So you'd have to come up with other, some other public safety reason to deny the variance. And if the fire code is okay with 30, then that reason from a public safety standpoint's not there. That's why staff was recommending approval of it is because, you know, that ordinance should take precedence. So ours is a general design standard in the condominium ordinance, which is probably out of date. So. The fire marshal's very sticky when it gets to, just like when we dealt with the project down at Geddes and Denton that had 40, you know, 42 units. They had one, one entrance on a loop. Those houses are pretty close together, Craig, and they didn't have, or Alan, they didn't have, you know, they had a couple of little spots where they added a few extra spaces in for, for parking. But basically, those were detached condos too under R4. They were just as tight as this. Since that was over 30 units, they had to put an emergency access back out to Denton Road next to the pond. So if we look at that, so essentially, they had a variance too.
I, I, I hear you, Jeff, but that's a different project and a different part of the town. I'm talking about, right now, I'm looking at a project that doesn't meet the recommendations, okay? The requirements. Doesn't meet the requirements.
Okay, that project was R4 detached condos.
And that project.
I know. It's the same thing, though.
Talk about this one.
That project had 44 units. The building separations were exactly the same. The parking situation was exactly the same with more units. From a physical standpoint of getting in and out, they only had one access point. They had a loop, which is why, is why it didn't need a variance because it had a loop. But they, but they were still coming in and out off of Denton Road at one access point from a physical standpoint. But so from a design standpoint, it was exactly the same thing. The only issue is this is a dead end and it's not a loop. So they're all coming in and out at the same, you know, road because it's not distributed amongst the loop, but they're still coming in and out of the road at the same point. But from a parking standpoint, it's exactly the same thing. Those buildings were, and those buildings were 10 feet apart with 40-foot and 50-foot footprints. So they were even closer together than these are. So, so I think you have to, even though that project was a little bit different from a design standpoint, it was exactly the same in terms of the building separation. So this is unique in the standpoint it doesn't, it doesn't loop around, which causes to require the variance. So, and in that particular case, since it was over 30 units, the fire department required an emergency grass paver access back out to Denton Road at a different location. Just because the fire code required it because it was more than 40 units or 30 units. But essentially, it was the same, you know, same essentially physical design with houses on both sides of the street, you know, 10 feet apart.
Well, in effect, if you, if you vote for this motion, you're voting to allow 26 units. If you vote against this motion, you're voting to maintain whatever is in the ordinance currently.
Correct.
Well, we're not changing the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not looking at-
No, no, I said that. I didn't say-
It would be a variance to the ordinance to allow, yeah.
Or you're voting to maintain to 20 units, which is what the basic ordinance is right now.
Motion is in the affirmative for the variance and for preliminary site plan. If you want to, you can split the motions into two motions. One for the variance and then depending on how that goes, make another separate motion on the site plan.
Because this motion's on the floor, we have to either approve it or disapprove it.
Unless they want to retract it and unless there's approval from the second or to retract. So. Could remake the motion and go one at a time, which might be easier. So, so we're dealing with one issue at a time.
I would support making the motions separate, but I didn't, I supported the motion, Dawn. Put the motion on.
Does the motion maker want to retract or not? You don't have to retract your motion.
Yep.
I really don't want to.
Okay. All right. Well, the motion stands then. So.
Okay. My, um.
Original motion maker doesn't want to retract the motion. So.
I support it. So.
Okay. All right.
Okay. My, uh, my feeling on this, and I do agree with you, Commissioner Okon, that basically a rule is a rule. However, I know that lines are drawn in the sand and sometimes stepping over them is not a real big problem. I don't see this, because what we're dealing with here is not their, not their parking issue. What we're dealing with here is, is this gonna create a difficulty for fire, fire access, emergency vehicle access, et cetera, et cetera. And we can't suppose somebody's having a graduation party or anything else and what, what do you do about that? That's-
Go down a rabbit hole with the supposition. So.
So the question, the question in-
They'll just drive through the front yard.
Yeah.
With this, with this motion on the, on the floor, the question is, can we accept this as a good solution for that narrow parcel of, of property? You, you may maintain no. That's your prerogative. I, I don't see any problem with it myself.
And the, the, I mean, we don't have anything that specifies how many parking spaces we need to provide.
Two per house.
Per house. We've got that. We've got more than that.
That four per house plus on-street parking.
And we have to have a finding of fact of why we would-
Yeah, he's maintained enough front setback that you've got full parking spaces in front of the garage. So.
And, I mean, wouldn't we have to, would we have to have some sort of finding of fact if we wanted to deny this?
Well, I think you have to have justification to deny it. There aren't any hard, you know, and the condominium ordinance and subdivision ordinance, there aren't any, aren't any hard criteria for a variance. Most of it has to do is whether it makes sense or not. And since we have the, the building and fire code that provides another standard, you know, from a safety standpoint, you know, I think we need to make, you know, we need to understand that, you know, that's a, that's a national standard from a safety standpoint.
Right.
It's a national building code and fire code. And since they're not-
Why haven't we updated that? Why haven't we updated it?
Building and fire code just changed last year. So. This doesn't, issue doesn't come up very often. So if you want to direct me to do an ordinance amendment, I'll do an ordinance amendment.
Jeff just thought of it today.
The issue doesn't come up that often, Alan. So, you know, we, we did an amendment to the subdivision and condominium ordinance last year for another reason. We can, you know, this is simple enough to change if we need to change it. So.
Any other comments on this motion? We do have a motion.
I feel that there's no issue with this, that we could justify voting against it, frankly. But.
Hearing unseen none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
No.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
No.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. So the motion does carry. And so this would then go to the trustees, correct?
Yes.
Recommendation? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item three. That would be, this is basically a study session for us. We're gonna talk about the five-year comprehensive plan update, where we're gonna review the draft amendments for our five-year update to the comprehensive plan and authorized distribution of proposed amendments for review and comment. Jeff, could you explain even more?
Yes, we had a study session a month or so ago with the township board just to kind of get kind of general goals and objectives on, you know, on the, on the forefront. You received kind of the meeting summaries from Dick Carlisle's office. I think we forwarded those to you under separate cover a few weeks ago. You know, there wasn't too much that came out of the meeting that we didn't expect in terms of what, you know, people's thoughts were. You know, one of the big issues, you know, you know, the big areas I think we needed to concentrate are, I think, that we talked about in the meeting are the Michigan Avenue mixed-use area, the Lott's Road mixed-use area, the area up at Copernick Road. We talked a little bit at that meeting in terms of the, the land use and whether or not we wanted to change some of the industrial to residential up in that area east of the freeway. And then one other area that was brought to my attention was our rural residential areas in the west part of the township. You know, we've done, we've tinkered around with amendments to some of those areas along Warren Road near West Chester. And so for discussion tonight, I just, you know, brought up some history and some background on, on those areas for discussion purposes. So the first thing that, since you kind of abdicated and didn't want to have a subcommittee, I put together some draft amendments for discussion. That's all they are, is here for discussion. We can change them however you want. But kind of my goal tonight is to give you, give me direction on what you would like to move forward with so I can put out the official notices for the 65-day review period so we can establish a public hearing in November. So that's kind of the goal is to get, you know, get, get these drafts published so we can get them out on the street for review. So the, so the first thing that I got for you is some text changes. And they're not major text changes, but the, and the future land use element, I don't know whether you went back to look at your big plan or not. So I just kind of referenced the page in this document if you wanted to, to go back and look at the context of all of these objectives. But basically, I didn't strike through and underline any of these. What I did is I just kind of redrafted them in place. It would be too confusing, I think, to look at the, the policies. But the big issue with the Michigan Avenue corridor, if you looked at it, 1.5.2, I broke it into three subpolicies, A, B, and C. So based on our discussion with the board, we talked about what to allow on the north side of Michigan Avenue, what to allow on the south side of Michigan Avenue, and then all of the remaining areas. So C is kind of what exists today in all, in the, all the other areas. It was more of a, a broad sweeping kind of, in these mixed-use areas, we're gonna allow consideration of LIR, you know, O1 and C3 zoning. There is a differentiation between the north and the south side of Michigan Avenue. On the north side, as we mentioned with the last rezoning, that's pretty much limited to LIR because it's adjacent to residential. There's more performance standards for LIR. On the south side is where most of our light industrial and general industrial zoning is. So in A and B, I kind of split it up into areas. And, and really what we're kind of doing, let me bring up the, the big map here. So we can see a context of what we're talking about. Here's the big map here. Let's see if I can. Colorful.
Red sticks out.
So what we're talking about is really in between Sheldon and, and Morton Taylor Road. Eh, wrong map. So we're really looking at this area from essentially Sheldon Road here over to Morton Taylor Road here is really where the policies kind of are written. So in policy, 1.5.2A, the way I've got it drafted, is the mixed-use designation along the north side of Michigan Avenue, which would be this area here from the ITC corridor over to Sheldon Road, would allow for the consideration of light industrial research, office, C3, and/or mid-rise development. The mid-rise development is what the change is. And that would allow mixed-use development that could be commercial and/or residential, three to eight stories in height. So what it would do is it allow the consideration of some residential there, but only if they did it in a way that was compact, that went up instead of out, preserved the natural resources, and created more of a sense of place. We don't need more one-story, multiple-family development in this area along Michigan Avenue. It needs to be more urban in scale based on the impacts of Michigan Avenue on that. Get some commercial in the front, maybe with some residential above it. Get some multiple-story residential behind it. You know, if, if somebody, if that's what the market is in this area is for, for multiple-family residential. And then you can kind of create different types of housing for the up-and-comers who want to be someplace that has amenities. I guess that's the best way to explain it.
Would that include educational buildings?
It could be, it could be, yeah. Anything that, you know, MRD allows quite a bit of, of commercial use along with residential use. So.
Talking about satellites and trying to get them to bring them-
Yeah. So it, it allows a lot of the C2, C3 uses along with, you know, multiple family. So I think if we, by just, you know, instead of allowing R6 or MR there, we're not gonna really get, I think, what the goal of the board was talking about at that meeting where they really wanted, you know, and you've got a lot of wooded areas there too. And in order to save those, you have to go up instead of out. So if you do multiple stories, then we're not gonna get just a sprawl of, of single-story apartments there. Where every piece of wood has to be cleared off the site. I don't think that was the board's goal at all. So.
Jeff, can you explain the differences practically between LI and LIR?
Light industrial is a general industrial district, warehousing, distribution, light manufacturing. LIR is more specific. It has bigger setbacks, bigger buffer areas, more, a little bit more restricted uses, less outside storage type of things. Everything's inside. You can't do any kind of outside storage in LIR where LI would allow outside storage as long as it was screened. So in B, that's why, in B, since it's on the south side, we're allowing LI instead of LIR because we already have a lot of LI zoning on the south side of Michigan Avenue. And on the south side of Michigan Avenue, under 1.52B, we're recommending R6 zoning because you've got a lot of single-family in the old Sheldon Settlement down there. You know, in the Die Brother subdivision, that was an old kind of post-World War II subdivision. So I think R6 in that area because it's, you've got a lot of environmental areas, you've got wetland mitigation areas. It's, it's a little bit lower scale. You know, the commercial is not as intense on that side. It's not as deep. And, you know, MRD zoning probably wouldn't fit in on the south side in that particular area. So we would recommend allowing consideration of up-to-single-family attached zoning there. That would allow some flexibility as to, you know, one or two-story type of apartments or condominiums. So. So that's, you know. So those are basically the policy changes under the mixed land use for Michigan Avenue. Now, along Lott's Road corridor.
Before we go there, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On your previous, thank you, sorry. So if I look at an overhead, I think we had actually discussed this last time with the board. If you look at the overhead, I'm looking like, you can see the landfill there, and it's gonna be in operation for another 20 years right now. And I think the distance from the landfill to that Morton Taylor area is about 1,800 feet. Right now, you can see it's a wooded area. I have, I have a concern with, you know, without really understanding the odor and the noise levels and the soil levels of what that landfill would cause or causes at this moment, I'd have a hard time with making that residential. And I don't have an issue with light industrial or the, having a school there. I mean, in terms of like a educational center where they're only operational. But I know when I go to work at 5:30 in the morning, those trucks are going up that hill. The birds are everywhere.
This area right here between, you've got the ITC corridor here, the landfill's from here over. So this dark purple area, even though it's zoned, general industrial, this is a wetland mitigation area of the landfill. So the landfill doesn't come all the way over to Morton Taylor. The landfill only comes over to the ITC corridor.
Right.
Okay. So you've got the ITC corridor as a buffer, and then this is a wetland mitigation area. So you have, you know, a quarter mile there between the land- area. So you have, you know, a quarter mile there between the landfill and Morton Taylor Road, essentially, as a separator, so.
Right. I work three miles from this, in a new building, and just during the day, we would get the smell into our ventilation system. Even right now, Arbor Hills is complaining about the odors from their municipal waste. I just hate to put children and families that close.
Well, and you would consider that if a zoning application came in to change the zoning in that area, we could consider it at that time. Part of it's going to be market-driven in terms of what that area's been used for. The township owns a good portion of that area in Die Brothers. There's about six houses left in that subdivision. A lot of those houses are on the market. And what we're, the problem is what we're getting is a hodgepodge of stuff in there. People are picking up two or three parcels, and they're throwing up a little warehouse here and a little warehouse there. What we need to encourage is people to go in and pick it all up and develop it all as one piece. So you have consolidated development. They can create their own buffers, they can create whatever they want to create there. And the Die Brother subdivision, this area here, south of Michigan Avenue, kind of behind, you know, the Coney Island and some of that strip commercial, you know, that's an old antiquated, post-World War subdivision. You know, back in the 80s, the township picked up a lot of those parcels, tore down the homes under CDBG grant. We picked up a lot of the parcels in there. Where you see a lot of the parcels, where there aren't parcel lines, those are all owned by the township. Those have been consolidated either through tax reversions or through CDBG funds over the past 30 years. So the purpose of the mixed-use policy would be allow some flexibility down there. You know, it could be, we could just say, okay, more of it needs to be, more of it needs to be commercial. The depth of commercial there needs to be increased. It could stay as light industrial, if somebody wanted to pick it up and develop it as a light industrial park. In 25 years I've been here, nobody's wanted to do that. So then what do you, you know, then what do you want to promote? So if we want to promote, you know, if we want to allow consideration, not necessarily even promote, if we want to allow consideration, flexibility of residential in that particular area, what should it be? We can say, we don't want residential there at all. We can just keep it the way it is.
Right.
But if we want, but I think there was some discussion with the board and the Planning Commission, not necessarily the stuff here next to the landfill or in front of the landfill, because the township owns that property, too. That was one of the discussions, and we thought that was where your concern was, Anne Marie, was the area directly in front of the landfill. And that was originally, somebody was interested in buying that and putting apartments there, and we said, no, that's not appropriate, because it's right behind the landfill, and nobody wants to be, have residential. I think this is far enough west of the landfill. You know, the winds come from the west, they blow to the east, so essentially, they're not going to get the prevailing winds blowing, you know, methane fumes, you know, toward the houses. So it's on the right side of landfill.
You will get the noises in the trucks, though, because I can hear them across the street when I'm driving up.
But by the time this happens, from a future land use standpoint, the landfill could be closed in 10 years.
Yeah, that was the point I was going to make, is that we've got to, even though this is a work in progress, I think we've got to think in terms of, you know, long-term...
I mean, if somebody wanted to consolidate all of that and redevelop it.
...ski hill in 30 years, right?
Like, right now, I was told 20 years by Tim, that it's going to be in operation.
Well, 10 to 20 years, it depends on how much, it depends on where they're getting their garbage and how much garbage they take. But essentially, that whole side of the landfill...
Mountain, skiing.
You know, the north side and the, you know, a good portion of that is closed. You know, the landfill sits back further in terms of where the open portion of landfill is. But, you know, then they've got the recovery facility up front, closest to Michigan Avenue is where they've got the recovery facility that's being run.
And eventually, that would be, I mean, long-term, you'd see that as a big, large green space, and maybe, you know, with soil measurements, making sure it's safe, put residential. It's just the residential part that bothers me.
Right. But, I mean, that's something you could always consider when a zoning came in. But, I mean, how, I guess it depends on how flexible do we want to make that. You know, this is a mixed-use area. We know that the market's in flux along Michigan Avenue. We're going to have more demand, you know, for higher-intensity residential uses. Right now, we have no multiple-family zoning in the entire township. We have zero available parcels that are zoned for multiple-family, other than what's in the Uptown Plan Development.
We used to have it, but it was changed over the years.
The piece at Morton Taylor in Michigan, the wooded piece there, was zoned multiple-family. It's now zoned commercial. So, but, you know, other than the Lott's Road corridor that allows, you know, some of that to happen along the Lott's Road corridor, which is the next policy, we really don't have any commercial zoning outside of a P, or multiple-family zoning outside of a PUD, so.
Just the residential, that close, without understanding the soil tests and everything and the noise.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, I think what we need to do is, we need to think broadly about land use patterns and what's appropriate there. And then the other issues will take place when it gets, you know, when somebody wants to develop it, you know, they have to take into all those environmental considerations when it comes time to market and develop the property. So whether we're marketing it to sell, or whether or not somebody else is marketing it to sell, we don't own all of the property in there. There's still lots of individual property owners in there that are trying to sell their property and can't use it for single-family right now. And I have somebody that wants to build nine single-family houses down there, and I said, no, you can't. But we don't want that hodgepodge either. We want, it makes sense for the stuff to be consolidated. There's a lot of wetlands that run through the south portion of it, north of the DPW, so there's some environmental constraints, so a lot of it's going to have to be clustered a little bit. So, you know, that area in there, in between Sheldon and Morton Taylor, is, you know, you've got some frontage pieces that are bigger pieces, that you've got some older industrial on, or some older commercial uses on the front, that are probably obsolete. So once you start picking all those pieces up, and people start consolidating that property, what do you want it to look like? And that's what the question is, is what do we want it to look like? How much flexibility do we want to allow under the master plan, you know, knowing that the zoning right now is still light industrial?
In terms of looking at the future, too, I'm sure you can shed light on this. The mid-rise development zoning is something that we don't have, it's a product that we don't have available. And I think that that's, there's going to be a call for that. You know, with what's going on in Ypsilanti, I think we're going to be probably having people look, you know, younger people coming in, you know, non-family, but research and educational type of mode. Right now, we're great for families and for people that want to settle, but I think that maybe in the future, we're going to have an area where people are going to want to come in here and work, and work close to home, and be able to get some recreational access at the same time, kind of a different kind of lifestyle than what we've got. And I think with the mid-rise development, we're probably going to get development that's more user-friendly and softer in the light industrial area.
Okay.
And I think a lot of people will probably enjoy that.
Okay, so on 1.5.2A, is everybody okay with that subpolicy on the north side with the MRD added in there?
The only question I have is, are we, with any of these, are we restricting ourselves and have to bounce back and forth, like tonight with the one parcel? Is it something that you've got to do this either or?
Well, I mean, part of it is they could always come in with planned development districts and overlay the zoning with a planned development district. But then this gives you the guidelines as to what kind of uses that could be considered by designating the types of uses via zoning that you're interested in having there. It gives you some kind of guidelines for a planned development.
Right.
The planned development supports these uses. If it's outside those boundaries, then you're going to think about it a little bit harder. So I mean, I think what it does, it tells you, okay, we don't want, we don't want same-old, same-old apartment development down here. We're not going to just give up all this property and let somebody come in and rezonate multiple-family or R6 and just, you know, do standard condos or apartments on it. You know, we want you to create something that's different.
And we don't want to nickel and dime the little parcels and say, well, this has got to be this, this has got to be that.
Right. So, you know, so if they come in and do straight zoning, this would be the application. If they came in and did a planned development, it would still provide the guidelines, because the zoning districts kind of give you the guide, you know, the general boundaries of what a PDD should look like, so.
I know we haven't talked about it, Jeff, but on the other side of 275, is any of this a possibility along that stretch of Michigan Avenue to Westland border?
Well, five, I think, number of years ago, this area along the south side of Michigan Avenue was designated commercial, and it went back to light industrial. So the blue areas here are commercial. This darker area here is general industrial, because it's not a landfill, but this purple area is light industrial, so.
So the reason that I ask that is because of its proximity to I-275. I'm wondering if that's an advantage to us to go mixed-use in that area as well?
I mean, we could.
You know, not knowing what the market is going to bear, but if it's going to be okay on this side of I-275 of Michigan Avenue, why not okay on the other side?
We've gone back and forth, and there, you know, you've got a lot of hodgepodge, older commercial uses in there. It is commercial on the north side. Those are smaller, less-deep parcels there on the north side. Some of it is highway interchange-type use. The darker areas near Lott's Road, that's all C4 highway interchange uses. That's why it's designated regional commercial.
Well, for the same philosophy that we're talking about now, wouldn't that philosophy apply there in terms of control, or at least developing an opportunity for PDDs that come in and satisfy, you know, something that takes away the hodgepodge?
I mean, they can always propose a PUD for anything, and then you take it or leave it. All other areas along Michigan Avenue that are designated mixed-use shall allow for the consideration of light industrial research in the north, light industrial on the south, office, and C3. So, I mean, you could apply this whole area that's in, essentially, you know, this whole block area, you could make mixed-use.
We're not hurting ourselves by doing that, right? I mean, I don't, does anybody agree with that, when you look at it? And it's kind of, to me, it's kind of like a forgotten area.
Over the past 25 years, we've gone back and forth in terms of what the appropriate land use is there. And if you look at the zoning map for that area... Where's the zoning map? You know, it's mostly zoned light industrial. You've got a couple pockets of C3, you know, that are there, but most of it is zoned light industrial currently.
Oh, it is kind of hodgepodgey, right?
Got a piece there that was the old Walters Appliance Store. That's now the garden shop or whatever, garden equipment shop. That's zoned C3. As you get closer to Lott's Road, you've got some C4 and C3 zoning, because it's highway interchange-type use. At the corner of Hanan and Michigan, you've got some C3 zoning. So most people, most commercial development wants to be west of 275.
Right.
I've talked to people in the past several weeks, and they, you know, I've looked, I said, you know, look at these areas here. You've got some existing C3 zoning that's not being used. They go, everybody wants to be west of 275, because that's where the people are. You know, when you get off of 275, you go west into Canton, you know, unless you're headed specifically into Westland. You know, most of the traffic is heading, you know, west into...
And that could stay that way, but I'm thinking, you know, perhaps set up the scenario where the mixed-use designation on the east side gives some opportunities that maybe somebody's looking for to set up.
And I have no problem. Nobody has, you know, it neither hurts nor, it doesn't hurt anything. We can make it that whole area west of, or east of Lott's Road, mixed-use.
Good with that.
Okay.
Otherwise, what?
You know, policy number C then would apply to all other areas, then.
Right.
For consensus to change that area of the map to mixed-use?
Mixed-use, yeah, both sides.
That includes residential.
Just on the south side of Michigan Avenue.
You don't want to do it?
You've already got established commercial uses on the north side. The property on the north side is not conducive...
On the north side?
Is not conducive, adjacent to the Rouge to be in.
Okay.
I would just keep it on the south side.
When you say mixed-use, that encompasses light industrial?
C3, light industrial, or office, so. So you've already got LI zoning and C3 zoning in the area, so you might as well allow it to go either way, so.
Right, okay. Just on the south side, on that side.
In the area east of Lott's Road, on the south side of Michigan Avenue over to Hanan to mixed-use. Okay. So let's go back to policy 1.5.2A, which included adding the MRD area into the north side. Is everybody, consensus that that's an okay idea?
Yeah, I like that.
That's the north side, right?
And then on B, adding in MR, or R6 to the, actually changing it to LI and to allowing the consideration of R6 on the south side between Sheldon and Morton Taylor.
That's my headache. But I don't know how, you know, how you...
I mean, we can always advertise it that way. You can think about it, and then, you know, as we get through the public hearing process, we can always take it out if you're not comfortable with it. But at least we can keep it there for consideration and comment to get it advertised.
For the hearings? You mean during the hearings, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, we're not adopting anything tonight. All we're doing is getting something together to advertise a notice. So if you're okay with wording the way it is, we'll just keep it the way it is, and then you can kind of digest it and mull it over, and we can discuss it further at public hearing in November, so. So everybody's okay keeping that.
So in terms of the residential there, we're talking just R6...
On the south side, between Sheldon and Morton Taylor on the C3.
Oh, I thought that was on the north side.
No, on B is the north side. A is the north side, B is the south side, C is all other areas.
On the south side, then, wouldn't we be better off having the mid-rise development?
I don't, I think mid-rise is too intense on the south side, given the nature of the existing uses and the fact that you've got single-family along Sheldon Road. I just don't think mid-rise, three to eight, on the north side, because you don't have anything there, it backs up to the river and the woods, and you're trying to save the woods, and you're trying to create something on the north side there.
Right.
On the south side, you've got existing single-family and kind of lower intensity retail there. I don't think mid-rise probably would work there. It's just my gut feeling.
You guys agree with that?
I think it's a transition back down to the single-family in the Sheldon Village there along Sheldon Road.
Okay.
Where is Sheldon Village?
Sheldon in Michigan is the old Sheldon Settlement. So you've got all of those houses along Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Avenue.
Oh, okay.
And along, you know, you've got some cross streets in there. You've got some, you know, that's one of the historical hamlets.
Actually, very wooded area right now.
You've got some houses there off to the west side of Sheldon that run off of some of the side streets. So, I think Habitat built a few houses back in there a few years ago. Okay, so that takes care of the Michigan Avenue corridor. The Lott's Road corridor, really the only change I'm proposing for your discussion tonight. The policy is really, the previous policy was basically to allow consideration of attached housing east of Lott's Road, south of the, you know, south of the creek, subject to PDDs and consent judgments. And we approved the consent judgment, or the conditional rezoning for BW East last fall, the piece directly south of Home Depot. Let's pull it up here. So basically, what we're talking about is just the area between the ITC corridor and the creek, basically. This pink area here is the mixed-use area. So the area here, this 40 acres, is what was conditionally rezoned to R6 last fall. This area here is a big wooded wetland, and then you've got the Lott's Road stuff, and then you have a 30-acre tract through here. So basically, you've got some of this here that's not wetland and woodland, is developable. This is, you might be able to consolidate some of these parcels. A lot of what's happening along Lott's Road's not going to change. That's zoned R2. Those are, you know, larger estate lots on basically a dirt private road. Then you've got some parcels down here, you know, this, a long time ago, we had apartments planned for there, but that never happened. There's some wetlands that run through there. So you've got some physical constraints in there, so it affords the need to have some flexibility in that area. Five years ago, the feeling from the Planning Commission was is they didn't want to allow consideration of residential at all between I-275 and Lott's Road, even given the constraints. But I think, given the BW East conditional rezoning and some of the market information they provided us, you know, Lott's Road is a dead-end road. It dead-ends, you know, it dead-ends basically at Warren Road. So it doesn't go anyplace. It's not a regional thoroughfare. It's a local road from a standpoint. So you're really not going to get any commercial or industrial uses like Victor Parkway along there, which was kind of the feeling, that it could be like what we normally, like we see in Livonia along 275, along Victor Parkway. That's never going to happen here. A lot of the roadway, a lot of, most of the property does not have exposure to 275 due to the wooded wetlands. So it's an isolated area, but it's one of the only areas that we really have the infrastructure to support multiple-family or attached housing. We see a lot of that along Cherry Hill and along the southern reaches of Lott's Road, north of Cherry Hill there, you know, where we've got some condos and apartments already. And we've got an assisted living... and we've got an assisted living facility there. So, the change to the policy would be allow, allowing consideration of residential in that whole mixed use area, rather than limiting any consideration of residential to the east side. So, that's really the only change I'm recommending to those policies. But I did add policy 1.5.5 based on input from the board and the planning commission. It says, you know, "Use of the planned development option or conditional rezoning process is encouraged to allow for flexibility of use layout design. Use of these options are also encouraged to facilitate the clustering of buildings, creation of park space, preservation of forested areas and other natural features, and provision of pedestrian and bicycle paths and connections to the community's regional trail system." Those were all goals and objectives that were discussed at the study session. So, I just put it in writing. These are our goals for this area. If you're going to do attached housing in this area, you're going to, you know, we recommend that you use the PDD or conditional zoning, and we can work through the process with you to get these things incorporated into your plans, so. So, those are the major changes to those policies.
Now, that would be on both sides of Lott's, right?
Yes. So, policy 1.5.5 is new, so the other ones are just modifications of the other existing policies in there. And then the zoning strategies kind of follow through. We still want to get rid of the overlay district along Ford Road for the commercial areas and replace it with a central business district overlay. That hasn't been, we accomplished a portion of that repeal of the overlay district in the past five years, but when we got to Ford Road, a couple of years ago, we had some objections to repealing a portion of the overlay district. I think it's still a good idea is to replace the corporate park overlay district with a CBD overlay for the area along Ford Road, and get rid of the overlay district for the area south of the drain, and just deal with that as separate planned developments or conditional zonings. So, those zoning strategies were just updated to reflect, to reflect those occurrences, so.
That's a project that we just approved not that long ago. They have office in the bottom and a lot of residential.
Yeah, most of that, yeah. That's moving forward. They should be bringing in a planned development application soon pursuant to their conditional zoning agreement. They have to work through some DEQ issues with the wetland mitigation areas before they finalize their PDD plan, so that's what they're trying to finish up, is to get DEQ to sign off on their wetland mitigation and conservation areas.
So, would the proposal be consistent with that?
Yes, it'd be consistent with that, yeah.
What is the density for R6?
Up to eight units per acre, so. So, I think they were at seven overall.
Oh, man, I'd like to see it, see what it does.
And I think if they did something like that down on Michigan Avenue on the north side, you know, you do some of the higher-rise buildings, and you mix in some of the other things where it's appropriate, and, you know, kind of mix it up a little bit and get a variety of housing, and not make everything so one note, then you're creating opportunities and you're, you're hitting different points in the housing demand, you know, you know, from the market standpoint, so. So, anybody have any questions or concerns with the Lott's Road policies and strategies? Okay, all right. So, really, it just kind of cleans up what we had from five years ago and incorporates a lot of what you guys had to say a few weeks ago.
And when do you look at the hearings happening, then? What are the dates?
We're probably looking at November hearing.
November, okay.
Second meeting in November, probably, unless we're not busy, and then I'll have it on the first meeting, so. But we have a 65-day period probably from the end of this month, so that gets us through September and October. So, then, you know, the 65 days then will give us, you know, to middle of November. By the time Connie and I get the notices out and we get this package cleaned up and ready to go on the road, it'll be the end of the month, so. It was good that we moved it up from the 21st to the 7th because it's more flexibility for, you know, I'll come back later and give you a firm date on the public hearing date for that when we kind of back out the dates on that. So, the next change was, proposed change, we talked a little bit about at the board meeting, was, let me bring up the big map here. This is the existing future land use map for the area along Hagerty and Copernick. This is Holiday Park subdivision. This is the area of land that we were talking about changing to medium-high density residential. This area here is actually a Holiday Park, you know, part of the park system for Wayne County, and then this is the Mobile Home Park here. When we changed this five years ago, we got rid of the corporate overlay portion of that map and just made it all light industrial, which was probably not the smartest thing to do since we didn't recognize some of these existing uses here. So, in addition to changing this area up by Holiday Park to residential, I'm just kind of backing out what it should be in all, in all, you know, realistic aspect, expectations. So, this would be the change from light industrial on the map to medium-high density residential. These are the existing lots along Copernick, which should be residential, single family up to four per acre. This is the park area, and this is residential for the Mobile Home Park. So, it's just reflecting what it should be based on existing, and existing uses essentially that are there. So, that's the proposal to change this portion of the map. So, that was really the only map change I had, other than the one that you just gave me to show you. So, we got any questions, concerns, comments about that proposed change?
That diagonal line, the white line, that's the railroad?
White line is actually Copernick Road. Yeah, the railroad kind of runs, yeah, this is the railroad here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the railroad right here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that change.
It just kind of cleans up that map and takes care of that one amendment we talked about, east of 275, adjacent to Holiday Park. It's a transition from 275 to Holiday Park. I think it's a good transition. You've got higher density to the north. This is high density, up to 12 units per acre. That's the existing Canton Club Apartments up there, or whatever they used to call. This would be a good infill piece along that portion of the freeway. One of the areas that we haven't talked about for a long time that I thought was, was needing of a, had some conversations with some people about certain tracks within these areas that are designated light green, which are designated rural residential. Rural residential on our master plan allows for consideration of either RE zoning or RR zoning. RR zoning are five-acre lots, RE zoning are two-and-a-half-acre lots. So, this RR designation allowed up to one unit per two-and-a-half acres. This area here was changed about a year ago. This is the McLumpha piece, and this is the piece that you were just looking at with the PDD for Westchester III, or whatever they're calling it now. This was actually part of Westchester, and what they did is, when this was, when this originally came in, they had a density bonus, so essentially, for all practical purposes, this is really one per acre, because if you look at it overall, this whole area is one per acre. So, we were really, because we have so few areas that are designated this, and it was really there to protect the rural residential zoning. But most of the areas surrounding this area are all very low-density up to R1 zoning. We've got some, these frontage lots on Napier now that are kind of surrounded all by Westchester. You know, do they really need to be rural residential anymore, or should they just be two per acre like what's adjacent to it? You know, they're not likely to be subdivided. They're all frontage lots, but from a future land use standpoint, does it really make any difference to keep them rural residential? Probably the only development tract we have up in the northwest quarter is this 30 acres L-shaped property that's on Warren that has access all the way over to Napier. You know, it's right adjacent to, you know, pretty close to Westchester, which is already one per acre. Everything north of it is already zoned one per acre in terms of the existing, you know, subdivision up there that's been there for many, many years. So, what are your feelings about the, really, the effective use of the RR designation? I mean, my recommendation would be, I don't think it's been that effective. I don't think it protects anything. My recommendation would just to make it all very low-density residential, one per acre. That's what it's, our utility master plans and everything call for one per acre anyway, from a realistic standpoint, so from a sewer standpoint, it doesn't make any difference. I guess at a, at a minimum, I would take a look at the Warren Road corridor and making all of the Warren Road corridor one per acre, and maybe, you know, if you still felt there was value in keeping the RR designation, you know, all of the frontage lots along Hanford and Napier, you know, could retain their RR designation, but I'm not sure there's any value in keeping RR at all. But I'm just bringing it up for your discussion.
Is the logical?
You don't have to make any changes to it, but it was, it's something I think we need to take a look at to see whether it's still an effective tool.
Is it a logical step, then, to go to RE from RR?
Right, for people that have larger parcels that want to subdivide them, we've had a few that have rezoned RE and subdivided them with, you know, small private roads, but, you know, they'd have to have, you know, these parcels are narrow and deep, so unless you consolidate these parcels and resplit them, it's, they're very difficult to do anything with anyway.
Well, I was thinking that if, if we change it to RE and someone comes in.
It's already changed to RE.
Pardon?
The RR designation in the master plan means RE.
Okay, so it's, that's already there.
Most of the zoning in that area is RR. There've been a few parcels that have been rezoned up to RE since then, but not very many.
Gotcha, okay.
Most of the changes have been to R1, like the Westchester piece, where they've changed the master plan to R1, and then they've rezoned it to R1, so.
If it's, if it's changed to R1, you can't go backward to RE, right? But if you, if it's already RE, it can always go down to R1, right? I mean, I don't know what the future's going to bring there, but.
So, the question is, is do you think we still need the one dwelling unit per two acre designation on the plan?
Well, I thought you said RR was one per five.
Zoning. RE is one per.
Right, per two and a half.
Per two or two and a half, right.
Right.
So, the master plan RR is one per two.
Oh, I see.
So, it allows either retention of the RR zoning or allows a consideration for zoning up to RE, but not all the way up to R1, so.
Make sure that whoever builds there, then, they're bringing in roads also, because we just had a difficult discussion with dirt roads out on Ridge Road, so if we're going to develop more in dirt areas, you know, if we're going to lower, make the zoning allow more housing.
I mean, do we just want to keep it the way it is? Do we want to look at making any changes to these areas?
I don't know.
What do you guys want to do? We want, we don't have to make any changes. I just thought it was something that we needed to look at. You know, I've had several inquiries about property on, on Warren Road and whether or not it was possible to get it rezoned to R1, and, you know, I was looking at this area. We've got an area in the south that doesn't make any sense. This area, I would just recommend making R2. It doesn't make any sense retaining RR on that area around Westchester. It's just a little donut hole. And then we've got an area down here, which is, which is part of Central Park, and I would just make that one per acre to be consistent with the rest of Central Park. So, it's already developed out. It's not, the zoning's not going to change. It's already developed, but the RE makes it look like it's different than anything else, and it's really not. So, it was, it was a leftover piece because everything west of it at one time was designated rural residential, and that was changed five years ago. The south side of Cherry Hill Village was changed to three per acre from rural residential five years ago, but we didn't change the Central Park piece. So, those two, I would recommend just the, you know, the woods of Central Park piece, I would just make very low residential like the rest of Central Park on the east side of Denton Road, and the area along Napier, I would just make it two per acre, which is the low-density residential there adjacent to, to Westchester. So, the, so those two recommendations, I think, are more straightforward. The area in the northwest sector is a little bit more sensitive, so.
Will it help you when you're dealing with people to come in for us to change it?
Well, we need to decide from a future land use standpoint what we want it to be. Part of, part of it doesn't make sense anymore on the future land use plan. It is still a useful tool to keep the density at that level when all of the parcels are essentially, there's only a couple potential development parcels in there anyway. You know, unless somebody buys up all of the existing homes that are worth, you know, gobs of money because they're larger homes on larger lots, nobody's going to start buying those up and tearing the homes down and doing a subdivision. I mean, that's not realistic. It may be in Birmingham, but it's not realistic out in the northwest sector of Canton. You know, whether or not they start chopping off the fronts of the lots and developing the back portions, you know, you know, that's not going to happen at one per acre. I mean, that's, you know, that's not high enough density to, you know, to allow that to happen, so.
So, there's no real advantage to us to make a change right now?
Well, I don't, you know.
The flexibility's going to, you know, going to depend on who comes before us with a plan.
Well, the thing is, is do you want to decide now, or do you want to decide on an ad hoc basis when they bring you an application? Do you want to say, "This is appropriate now, and this is going to be appropriate in the future"? Or do you feel it's not appropriate and it should be very low-density instead of rural residential? What do you feel is the correct density and maximum development potential for this green area in the northwest sector? I guess that's my question for you.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with very low density as well.
Is very low being one per acre? Yep. We got a consensus that, so in the northwest sector, we could propose to change all of that to very low. The Napier road piece, you okay with changing that to low-density? And then the woods of Central Park, we can make that very low also to be consistent with the rest of Central Park.
Right. Excellent.
To fix the roads. Put that.
That's a whole different issue.
No longer have any rural residential.
So, that's all I had on the future land use amendments. That's, that's it for the most part.
Want this motion?
Yeah, we've got to make a motion.
Yeah, if you want to make a general motion to, to move the amendments as.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize Planning Services to distribute the recommended planned amendments as required by PA 33 of 2008 for review and comment. A public hearing will be scheduled November 2017 for formal consideration of the proposed amendments.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none and seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, could you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes.
So, this in no way, you know, this, this in no way means we're making these amendments. This is, all this means is that these are the proposed considerations that'll be put forward as, for, for review and comment and public hearing, okay?
Okay.
Thanks for all the work, Jeff.
Thank you for your work.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Nope, we've got some business to take care of. We have some further business. We've got to refer some business to staff. Ridge Creek, Westchester III, do I hear a motion to refer that to staff?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we've got to set a public hearing for September 11th. Wayland, Wayland Greenleaf Trust conditional rezoning, Canton Michigan Avenue development rezoning, and Westchester III final PDD. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing on September 11th?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any further discussion, correspondence, anything?
That's it.
Anyone wants to talk about? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Favor, say aye.
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 Hey, thanks for hearing.
Thank you.